...Street.
Twenty Street.
Clean door, all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. See, we don't have any visitors. This may be a fast meeting. Good. And no one here to make public comment. Okay, we have, the warrants are being passed around. I didn't sign them.
You want them back?
They're back.
I'll get them after, Joanie. I'll get them after. I would ask for a motion on the minutes for the Virgin City Council meeting, February ninth, two thousand ten.
I'll make the motion when we approve.
I'll let Randy make the motion and Chris second it. Open for corrections, omissions, or errors. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Budget?
I did not, obviously the warrants got prepared today, so I really didn't bother having Michelle prepare a nine-page budget report for you and hand that out. I don't know how you feel about it. I mean, I can get it to you if you'd like it, but because we do typically do a budget report every time that we do the warrants. If you, if you want one as a result from this set of warrants. There's not a heck of a lot of warrants here because we just met on, on February ninth. Basically, there's just regular, just some regular bills in there.
No problem. Anything that you know that jumped out, made a big change?
I did not. Actually, I have the budget on my screen on my computer. I was making my way through. Obviously, I don't like to see any more snow, Mike, but I could tell you that. This has been, from a labor standpoint, a pretty easy winter. I hate to say that, you know, before March because it can sour rather quickly, but if you look at the labor in the Public Works Department, we're, you know, we're in very, very good shape. There hasn't been all that much overtime. Salt, of course, you know, even the one time you have an easy winter, sometimes we go through salt just because, you know, just the nature of the storm, you know, you end up using, it isn't really necessarily by the inch. But overall, everything does look pretty good. You know, revenues appear to be in good shape. So what will end up happening is when, when we have our next regular meeting in March, we will, I will make sure that we pay the fourth quarter of all of our insurances. And that way, that gets most of the budget. And so all of those insurance and expenses are done. So really, the budget will start to, you can really start seeing, you know, how we're going to finish the year. So I'm going to say, I'm not sure, maybe that's something we should talk about at some point, Mike, about. I know you're going on vacation. About, last year, we had one regular meeting in March. It doesn't matter to me which night you have, but I think you shouldn't obviously make that decision tonight whether or not it's the sixteenth. I don't think you're back until the sixteenth, twenty-third, or...
Yeah, the sixteenth is good.
Yes, okay, all right. But I think we can get away with one, you know, one, obviously town meeting is on the first this year, that Monday. So I think if, you know, enough of the bills will come in, so one meeting on the sixteenth of March should be sufficient.
Let's, if no one has objections, let's set it for the sixteenth of March, seven P.M. Let's see if the fire station is available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Either that, or somebody is assigned to bring a bag of ice so we can fake the thermostat. Make it seem it's colder in here, and the heat will come on.
Boy, the first is next Monday, isn't it?
It is.
Oh, God.
Yep.
Yoohoo.
Well, it's just that closer to spring.
That's the way I look at it.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to committee reports. Lowell, you probably don't have anything to talk on. Joe?
Nothing to say, and I know that you had some comments.
Any comments on the school you want to make now, or are you going to do your manager's report?
I can comment. I can talk about it now. It's okay, Mike.
Sure, sure.
The dates are just a little bit off. I actually grabbed the, I went and looked up the lease just to make sure that I absolutely had the right date. And the lease that we currently have that encompasses the tennis courts, skating rinks, skateboard park, actually terminates on April eighth. So, you know, really, I really want to make sure that there is no confusion or anything. If somebody happens to get hurt down there after April eighth, I really don't want to end up getting into some legal mess of, is it on school property? Is it on leased property? Is it whatever? So that's one reason to, to try to get the, the real estate transferred over to us before the end of that lease being, being April eighth. I spoke to Linda Holly about that today. She suggested that I, I had not, I've not, obviously been away here for a week. I'm sure Tom O'Brien is, is aware that, of the city council's vote, that, you know, we are going to be taking over the pool. I need to confirm a letter, send a confirming letter to him about the council's action. So I just want to make sure that it is okay, because I know the newspaper made reference to us taking over...
That was my statement. So that's, my understanding was we were taking over as a...
Certainly, they need to get rid of it by June thirtieth. That is true. But I, I do feel, you know, relative to the lease, I also feel that if we're going to get into the business, we might just well get into the business of running the pool before the pool opens. That way, we have an entire season, if you will, of revenues and expenses on our books. So, you know, obviously, it's going to take us a little while to fully understand, you know, the, the revenue and expense stream. And I just think it's going to be easier for us if, if we take it over right out of the gate. And, and from a cash flow standpoint, you know, it's not a problem because people pay their season's passes. People pay their swim lessons. They pay it all upfront. So it's not as though by taking it on or before April eighth, that hurts us from a cash flow standpoint because the money, you know, we receive the money, the lion's share of the money upfront anyway. So before I write that letter, I just want to make sure that the city council and I are on the same page to go ahead and accept that deed on or before April, April eighth.
Like to see a show of hands that are in favor of having Mel. Go ahead and move forward with this. It's unanimous, so it's all yours?
Mel, I, as I said at the last meeting, I plan to coordinate with Linda Holly regarding fee structure and so... Is there anything else you'd like me to do?
Well, I think we, we do have a, we should have another one of those meetings similar that we had down at your house. You know, also, I will tell you, related to this, is that Kim Palmer, she's called the head of the swimming pool. I, I'm the swim team. They've been kind of sitting back, kind of, you know, wondering what's going to happen here. And, and I have made it clear to her that maybe, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical of the, of the way the school run these things, but the school apparently was very content with having, you know, this, the, you know, the swimming pool being run with a separate checking account, having the swim team being out there with all, their own funds. And really, we just can't, it's not that Joan and I, you know, love, love accounting money or whatever. It's about if we're in the business of running a pool, or if we're in the business of being the, if it's a city-run swim team, that's what it is. And, and we can't have other, you know, checkbooks and money and, and the hiring of personnel that can't really be done by others. It needs to be, you know, housed here. So the structure needs to be a little different. So I had a brief conversation, I've had, I've had more than one conversation with Kim Palmer. But I talked to her just before I went on vacation. Talked to her. I really couldn't went into detail. But as soon as I got back and got settled here, we, we should really include her as well. I don't think there's a need, Joe, to meet with the swim team separately from the, from the pool. I think we might just well get all the players at the table again and just let them know how, how it works. Because really, pretty soon, you know, those rates are going to need to be set by the city council. We need to have a budget. Even though, you know, it's all rev, it's revenue on the front end, but I think that the city council is going to need to be looking at a, at a pool budget earlier than, than typically would, you know, in the month of June.
Wouldn't they be meeting with us as a council, or would they be meeting with you and Joe in the summer?
Yeah, I think the first meeting would be Joe and I and a group that we met down at his house. Linda, I think Kitty, you know, Kitty was there.
Kim Palmer and Roland was supposed to be there, but he wasn't able to make it.
Okay.
And I'll forehand with you as far as agenda, whatever.
That's all. Okay, thanks, Joe. Anything happening in the surrounding towns that we need to be aware of?
No, I've talked to Recruit here most of while. A few other people that I've been seeing to be still inside there.
Okay, not much change. Randy?
I did meet with the board on the king last week. They're all very much. They are, aren't they? We talked about the snow shoveling project and that it's out there for them. And we also talked about, I had, we talked briefly about the senior project. And I'm assured that the HUD money is still being held up?
Uh, the HUD money has not been confirmed. It's been held, it has been held up because of some environmental assessment. There is a fair amount of wetlands over in that area, and so obviously, that's just being given close scrutiny, scrutiny. But, you know, you know, the rules are, you know, some people think that you can't disturb a wetland, and it's not necessarily the case, you know. Depending on the class of the wetland, there is some maximum disturbance. But I got an email from Matt Moore, and based on that email, it seems as though the environmental issues have been set, all right? But it's still going to be another month before they actually, official word from HUD. Relative to the, relative to the state money, I did go, I think I went later, you met on February ninth, and I think I went on the tenth, third, the eleventh with Terry and Matt Moore. And again, made a presentation, brief, brief for this time because the board members had, had heard us before. When, actually, other people went with us, Martin Casey, Betty Briskel. You know, there was, we filled the front table there when we went up the last, in November, but they wouldn't fund it because of the uncertainty of the HUD. I really don't think that's going to be an issue this time. But the announcement on that grant, I think the sheet in front of us was that the announcement wouldn't be made until, I'm going to say the tenth of March, something like that. So you should hear fairly soon. I think we've been on track. I mean, this is a, I was backtracking my emails the other day because Ted Kramp had stopped in. Some of you know Ted. Ted looking to come back to Virgens and wondered about the status of, of the senior project. And I backtracked my emails and, and if they can get all of the funding secured, you know, we're really, we're looking at a spring, two thousand and one occupancy, two thousand and eleven occupancy.
Wow.
Right.
Now, one of the things that was brought up by the seniors was property, school tax abatement for seniors. And I says, I could not answer that question, and then I would look at it. She says, well, other states, you know, don't charge seniors taxes for their, if they don't own their property for schools.
Right.
Somebody asked that.
Right, I know somebody's going to pay.
Well, I certainly know that in South Carolina, that if you're sixty-five years old and if you come from an educational, if you are a retired educator, you pay no tax. I am familiar with that. You know, relative to trying to respond to that, I mean, that takes legislative action.
Well, that's what I told her. I says, it's more on the upper levels. I tried to pass, not pass it up, I just passed it up to further up, but I felt I deemed necessary to mention some of that.
Well, you know, Randy, I'd be happy to, to make a presentation to the seniors about, because obviously, property taxes used to be real simple. You know, you just got a bill and you paid it. You know, now it is extremely complicated, the whole state payment. You know, when Joan sends out bills, there's a, there's a sheet that goes with the bill, you know? And, you know, if you're a mathematician, you can figure it out. But if you don't work in that, in that area, it's, it's very confusing. So I'd be happy, Randy, to, to, you know, offer my time to go up and make a brief presentation in hopes that people would under, could at least understand.
They, they, what they understand is that they would like not to have to pay the, we've already raised their children and paid for, paid for their schooling. Why should we have to keep paying?
Right.
And which is a logical argument. However, you know, I said, you know, to just the size of the state of Vermont and the number of people that were living within the borders, everybody has to pick up a share.
Right, right. It's the balloon, you know, obviously, it's the balloon. You push in on this side of the balloon.
It bulges out the other side.
It's going to bulge out the other side. So, you know, you know, obviously, it's very much income, you know, income-based. But I understand that, you know, if your, if your education tax, in essence, in Virgin is capped at two point seven five percent, it's still two point seven five percent. It's not zero. It's two point seven five percent. And they obviously would like to see it be zero like it is in other states. Because, you know, and I don't know how, how they do in other states, but I do know other states that, you know, that there, it is zero, you know, when you reach age sixty-five. So, you know, somebody else is picking up the tab.
More people per, per square foot, too.
Available, right, right.
That's it for me.
Just a little heads up on the, there's some statistics that it's going to be in the next City Voice, which should be going out this week, talking about what Job Corps has been doing for snow shoveling. We've got some information from them.
So they've been doing...
And those people that know Ivana Lawrence, on Sunday, in the afternoon, she had a baby boy, nine pounds, two ounces, I believe it was, and twenty and a half inches long. So if you have emails, addresses, and whatnot, please send your well wishes. Okay, we... David?
Committee with regard to the basin area and the docks, we haven't been able to meet as of yet. Conflicts there. I, I did have the opportunity to speak with, with a few of the business owners and some people that have been involved with the chamber. And everybody seems pretty happy with their decision. You know, I explained that basically, we weren't willing to trade a known quantity, which is that the voters that we know are coming are of economic benefit for an unknown. Not saying that there isn't any economic benefit, or there might possibly be at some point some economic benefit to the Moonlight Lady. But everybody seemed relatively happy with that decision. As soon as we can all coordinate our schedules, my work is pretty hectic, and I know Joe's work is pretty hectic. Both of us are down an employee. But as soon as we can coordinate, we'll, we'll be working on that. The other thing, kind of talking along the lines of what Randy was speaking about and taxes and the fiscal issues surrounding the city, certainly been a, an area that I focused on. I had some questions from folks regarding the voter appropriations, the items that are, are on the, the items that are on the warning that are the base that are various petitions for various nonprofits. And I guess the question comes up, I'd kind of hope that Andy would be here so that maybe there could be a little blurb in the paper. But hopefully, people will watch the TV, that I think that it's imperative, particularly in these difficult economic times, for people to make an informed decision. And, and what I mean by that is that I'm certainly not that aware of the fiscal condition or the fiscal operation of, of most of those organizations. I'm going to try to educate myself in the next week or so. The point being that, that some are probably better run than others. And that something that I would find very interesting is the percentage of an operating budget that goes to administrative expenses. You know, certainly from my perspective, you know, when I donate money to charities, one of the things that I look for is the, the greatest benefit. And the greatest benefit is generally achieved by those organizations where the administrative component is a relatively small percentage. So, and, and that may be a question that comes up for some of the folks that are here town meeting night.
Okay, very good. Chris, or, okay. Joanie, you got anything you want to share with us?
No, I'm outside.
Whole business update review on Griss Mill?
Nothing on there.
No change there? Fraud policy? We're putting that on there because that's still being worked?
Yeah, that should come, that should, and will come to you at the next meeting.
Next full meeting, yes. Go right then to the city manager's report.
Yeah, I'm just going to, obviously, I covered the, the pool. David brought up the Moonlight Lady. I, I just did want to let the, the board know that I did send a letter, send an email out to Mike Shea relative to the board's decision outlining the period of time that, that we will not reserve space for him and those dates that the board set. Mike did write back. I'll try to paraphrase. There is some disappointment from them that, that they did not, but I, but at the same time, he did appreciate the council taking action, you know, early on rather than later, so they can plan accordingly. He, he did make reference in there about hoping that the, that the city council in the future would consider the balance between commercial voters and non-commercial voters. I wrote back to him saying that I think that's really what the city council did, was to balance the, the use of the docks between commercial and non-commercial voters. But I did, I'm, I'll tell you what I told him, but I am, I'm relying on your brother on this one here, here, Mike. I did assure him that, that because the council really didn't have hard data, that, that the docks will be, that there, that an attempt will be made to have a much better understanding of usage, all right? And I haven't called Matt yet, but I know he's always done a boat count for us, and it's great information. And I'm going to give him a buzz and see if he'd be willing to also put dates on his chart. I know he, I know he keeps track of some things, because I think it's important for us to really get a good, a better handle on usage so that...
Are you looking per day?
Yes, actually.
I think he's got it.
Kind of along that lines, I was going to share with the committee, but I've been sort of, you know, maybe make a recommendation. I've been working on a little questionnaire that maybe we could have a volunteer hand out, perhaps once a week. Just a brief little questionnaire that people might, the voters might be willing to fill out. You know, where they come from, how long have they visited before, how long do they stay, that type of thing. That might give us a little more data.
I, I didn't know of also, I haven't had a chance to talk with you guys, if the merchants wouldn't play a part. A very short questionnaire, three, four questions, that might help collect some of the, the data that we're looking for as well. I mean, put a little bit in every store, and that way, if somebody comes in and, are you off a boat? Yes or no? If you are, just would you take two seconds to just check off a few blocks? And we wouldn't ask names, we just...
You know, again, you know, we, we had talked about some kind of a, maybe a honor system or whatever. We, if, you know, people want to include a little donation or whatever in with their questionnaires, or slip it in the box, that would, you know, that... But at any rate, that's something I was going to share with the committee, but I thought since you were already talking about that, I'd bring it up.
Yeah.
The other brief items here, I was mentioning to Mike before the meeting. And I'm really not sure if I made the board aware of this, but every, every year, the state conducts this equalize, this sales study that determines your equalized grant list, which sets your common level of appraisal, which basically adjusts the state adopted tax rate based on the ratio between our listed values and, and fair market value based on that sales study. And I, I filed an appeal of that on a couple of reasons. I really felt that the residential sales that we had were just fine. We had a lot of residential sales, and it did show that, that the percentage, obviously, we went through reappraisal effective April one, two thousand and seven. And as I mentioned to Mike, and I think we all know that if your value is, is the same today as it was on April one, two thousand and seven, you're pretty lucky. But, and so about those, the residential properties came in at a hundred percent. The commercial properties, when you looked at the sales, it actually came in at, at a number less than a hundred percent in the ninety-three to ninety-four percent range, which tells, which is, in essence, saying that, that our listed values are low. But when you get the magnifying glass out and you take a look at those nine sales that occurred in the last three years, five of the nine actually, I don't want to say that they were arms-length sales, but there was more things going on. For instance, I'll use Jackman Fuels as an example. These things are all a public record. Jackman Fuels bought out Lebon O'Brien's oil and propane business. And incorporated in that sale included trucks, the business, and Phil's property on Hopkins Road, including those tanks, all right? So obviously, it wasn't the case that a piece of property on Hopkins Road, Road sold. It was a bundled sale. And of course, when you have a bundled sale like that, something has to go on the property transfer return, and you got to try to figure out what's the value of the tanks. So that's just one of the examples that I, that I give, that sometimes a property transfer return really isn't the whole story. And in, in the case of Jackman's Fuels, it clearly isn't the whole story. The problem is, is that those kinds of sales get entered into our sales data, and to try to get them removed because it's not a typical sale of a single-family dwelling to another single-family dwelling, a totally arms-length, no, no distress conditions, it can end up tainting the numbers. So anyway, I file an appeal, met with a district advisor, and the way that they conduct their business, it's okay with me. I mean, I understand the rules, is that when I explain the situation about those five sales, that district advisor has to go back to their boss and relay that message. And anyway, the decision was made that, that they would not adjust our figures. And so we have an appeal hearing set for March eighteenth. We don't need a lawyer. I know how to get to the National Life Building in Malpeaure, and, and we'll go and appeal again. It, I haven't actually calculated what the numbers are, but, you know, by getting that number, right now, we're at ninety-nine point two, I think it is. It's either ninety-nine point two or ninety-nine point eight. And I really firmly believe that our listed values are probably more than a hundred percent of fair, of fair market value, all right? And so therefore, by that number being less than a hundred, our taxpayers, both homestead owners and non, and so-called non-residential property owners, in essence, are being penalized, in my opinion. So I, I've, I'm not settling this. I think Mike got a, there was, when you file an appeal, they send a stipulation to agree to, to their determination. I told Mike, don't, you know, no, that won't hit the city council table until I go to, go to National Life and plead my case. So there really is a problem with the commercial properties. And the other thing that happens is, is their rules are that when they determine a value, a CLA on the commercial property, that's what they use for the industrial properties. So in essence, they're concluding that Goodrich Corporation, Feed Commodities, the, I'm not sure if the Benton Building is, is in that now. But anyway, we have a series of, of industrial properties, even though no industrial property sold. No industrial property sold in the last three years. They end up using the commercial ratio against your industrial properties. And I just feel that there's no reasonable appraisal theory in that regard. And I've fought that battle before, and I intend to file it again. And I've fought that battle before, and I intend to file it again. So my goal is to try to get that number at 100 or above 100. And I can tell you, you know, a half a percent means a lot of money across, you know, $212 million with the real estate of Virgin, so it's not a, I'm not up there nitpicking, you know, it's some real dollars that can change for taxpayers. So that's on March 18th. Related to taxes, I went to the last meeting of the unification. I don't know if any of the rest of you were able to attend any of the meetings, but I was able to go to the meeting at the high school on February 10th. And I don't mind telling you what I said. I truly believe that unification is, is an opportunity, it's a real opportunity to save some dollars, because I think there is tremendous amount of room for efficiency. The question is, is will it result in efficiency? That's the thing that, that I'm just not 100% convinced about that, but I spoke to Kristen and other people that are on the committee, and my feeling stays the same. I think it's a real opportunity. But just to make sure everybody knows the numbers, all right? Because under unification, one of the things that I asked them about, and it's really too late, I told them, I said, "I feel a little bad that I'm coming in at, not at the 11th hour, about 11:30 in this regard." I feel a little bad that this, that there wasn't some smoothing of the numbers, because the way that the unification works, you know, you got, you know, Ferrisburg with a $1.3 million debt on their bill, $1.9 million debt on their building, Addison has $100,000 debt, you know, we have some debt, the high school has some debt, and all of a sudden all that debt and equity just gets dumped into the middle, and Addison has a rate of 1.4, and Virgin's has an education rate of 1.3, and if unification goes through, they just get all dumped together and you end up with a unified rate. Based on the numbers, if it gets approved, and if the numbers remain as the way that they were presented, all right, which doesn't reflect any efficiencies, it results in an immediate 4% increase in the property taxes to every Virgin's property owner. My immediate reaction, personally as a property taxpayer, I'm not wild about paying another 4% of anything, all right? But I do think there's a real opportunity here to save some dollars. I truly believe that there, that there is. Is there 4%? I really don't know. I mean, that's really the challenge, the challenge of the Board. So I don't want to sit here and sway you one way or the other as to, you know, I'm sure you all have your own personal feelings, but I just wanted to share, share the meeting that I attended, the things that I said, the way that I see the numbers, you know, so that people at least have some understanding of, you know, what this means if they're just looking at their, at their tax bill. Next item, just want to let you know, and I'm not sure how many people get this stuff in the mail, but we, we're a little lucky on our timing on our fire truck bonds. Typically, the bond bank, you know, you have a bond approval and you go to the bond bank and you get your, you borrow your money, and they sell bonds, whatever, they have a special thing going on in 2010, and they say that it's only 2010. I'm not really sure, there's like a big chunk of money that's been blown into the, into the bond bank, kind of become supply side, if you will, which will reduce the bond rate by about 25%. From normally, it's about 4 to 4.5% for long-term bond, and the bonds that they project on this thing is in the 3 to 3.25%. So of all of the years, for us to get fire trucks, fire trucks approved, our timing really couldn't be, couldn't be better. I just, I just hoped that there's enough, enough money to go around.
Thank Ralph for having me on.
Yeah. So anyway, that's all I had, Mike.
Okay, very good. New Business, request for planning and...
I meant, the word "planning commission" is supposed to be in there, I'm sorry, Mike, I found that today, obviously, my head was on North Carolina, so the agenda had a little typo. So that's, "Request from Planning Commission to Fund Planning Consultant." And there was a handout that was in your, that was on the table here with you, Neil's here to speak to the Board.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Chili.
It is brisk in here. Keeps things focused and on paths. I don't have much of a presentation on this subject, this is nothing new, it's things that I've been talking about for some months now in terms of looking to get some funds to help pay for consultants, to assist the Planning Commission to develop zoning regulations for Northern Gateway District, the new district, and standards for the new historic district, zoning regulations for the new historic district, and standards for the central business district. As I've said, you know, our, really our big dream here, this is a very small proposal in terms of what we would like to do. What we had hoped to do with a State of Vermont planning grant of $15,000 is totally redo the subdivision regulations on top of all this stuff and update comprehensively the zoning regulations to match the new plan. In light of the grant falling away, we've reduced the scope to what the Planning Commission feels is, is pretty narrow in terms of what do we need to do to make sure that we're, I'll say largely in compliance, right? The three big changes I just laid out there to bring those together. It's tasks that has volunteer planning commissioners, I don't feel that we have the technical expertise in-house to move that stuff forward and that kind of thing. I would mention that, you know, we project the schedule to take place, you know, we could, if the funds are available, we could start soon, within a month sort of thing. And I would hope to have it wrapped up by the end of the year, such that we'd forward on to the City Council some recommended updates to the developer view, to the zoning regulations, excuse me. They of course get your, your vote, your approval on them. In that, it's that long a period, some of this money can be in the next fiscal year, spent in the next fiscal year, but some of it would be in this fiscal year. So I don't know that I have too much else to say about that, and I'm happy to answer questions about...
Chris?
Neil, how does that work? Is you as a planning commission meet with Land Works and say, "This is our vision, this is public input that we've heard," and then they come together and make suggestions? Or, I mean, I want to know how much is our, the city's involvement versus Land Works' involvement?
Sure. Land Works, of course, was the consultant that we used to develop the town plan, so they have some experience with us as individual members, and Virgin's has the city, right? Sort of, and everything that we went through to get to the plan. So they have some familiarity with us. My expectation on how this is going to move forward is that there'll be a preliminary public meeting, which Land Works will help facilitate, to get input from community members about these three districts in particular. My expectation is that we as a planning commission will meet with Land Works and talk about our hopes and dreams and aspirations for these districts. Land Works will look at the town plan that has been, you know, the new town plan, which lays out these guidelines, I'll say, of how we want these districts to look in the future. And they'll make recommendations to the planning commission, and we will spend what I predict will be a great deal of time going back and forth, taking words out, you know, and rearranging. Ultimately, it's our document, and it's stuff that we as a planning commission will approve. And we, if going through the town plan process is any indication, it'll be a lot of reading and rereading and writing and rewriting and that sort of thing, such that we feel comfortable that the document that we forward to the City Council for approval is what is in the best interest of the city.
So, they're willing to work with you if you have a suggestion and they have a suggestion. Why I'm asking this is that we were on, we, when we were on the board, we had hired somebody to come in, and we had problems all the way through it. And we ended up, didn't even, I don't even think we did anything with them, did we? But I mean, it sounds like to me you guys have a good communication, and it cost us $10,000.
Yeah, we basically scrapped everything that they came up with.
We did. I just want to make sure...
It ended up, it ended up in the end, and different city council at the time, there was a lot of wrangling back and forth and some administrative errors on, not Randy, but Randy Friday when he was city manager that resulted in some significant delays. Ultimately, I think that, I think that we sat down and put pen to paper and just got it done, as opposed to relying on the consultant. I mean, things have certainly changed in terms of regulatory level at the state, and I think that there's, you know, I would agree with Neil, that there's a need for some level of technical expertise. I think that there's not a whole lot of need in terms of the consultant actually participating in the decision-making process. I think that in an ideal world, you know, basically what you have is, is you get the input, you craft, you craft whatever language, or not necessarily craft a language, but come up with a direction for them. And basically, in the way that I would look at it, is the consultant's job ought to say, "If you, if you want to go here, this is where you need to go." Or, "If you think you want to go here, that's not what's going to happen, you're actually going here." And I think that, yeah, I've worked with David as well, and I don't think there were any issues like that last time that I was aware of with David. I think a lot of it's personalities, too. I think the, I wasn't here when David Spitzer, whoever, whoever was hired, hired there, you know, but obviously was here, you know, when Land Works was engaged. We went through a, you know, competitive, if you will, and interview process, and ended up hiring Land Works. David, you know, obviously had a role to play here, but Natalie Steen was really the staff planner designated to us, and she learned very, very quickly that we have a very opinionated planning commission. You put a Neil Curtis and an Ivan St. George and a Mark Hatler and Jason Farrell and others at the table, you know, you really quickly learn, the consultant very quickly learns that they really aren't in charge. And actually Natalie caught that fairly quickly, that, and sometimes consultants, I've dealt with tons of consultants that are my way of the highway, and they're, they bring up something and it gets beat down, and they think you don't have a memory, and they bring it back up, and you beat that down, and they still don't think you have a memory. That was not the relationship that the planning commission had with, with Land Works and particularly Natalie. I mean, she really was, she got it. She really understood that, that the Virgin's Planning Commission knows Virgin's better than they do. I'll say that, you know. I don't know how to better say it.
Just following Christine's question, what Land Works did for us was, you know, for each individual section, we, as planning commissioners, drafted some language for it. And she took that and she drafted a whole slew of different options for each district, knowing that some of them were completely ridiculous, truly, that they were just all over the map. And so as planning commissioners, it was up to us to go through and say, "Yep, this makes sense, nope, that's ridiculous, and that's ridiculous, this makes sense." But she wasn't doing it from a, "This is what I think Virgin's ought to do." She was just letting us know that has, from a technical standpoint, these are the things that you could consider, and that's what we really need. When we're looking at zoning regulations for like the northern, you know, we need somebody to come in and say, "Here are the things that you can consider, here's all your options." And have somebody available for us to say, "Well, what does it mean if we choose this? How does that, you know, what does that look like long-term?" And, you know, some give and take on it, that sort of thing.
Randy?
I have a question. You had mentioned that if you could have gotten a $15,000 grant to do the whole rewrite plus the subdivision regs, if money was no object, is it really $15,000 or is it 10?
Is it really $15,000?
You know, $15,000 is what you would get, you would spend $15,000. Could you rewrite everything you need to do for 10 or less?
I, back in September when I first started going down this road, I asked for two prices, one on sort of a narrow scope and one on the full scope. And the full scope came in at, you know, $14,95, something like that, right?
Yeah, but you understand where I'm going with this. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to do just, if you've got problems with the subdivision regs, you should go for it. We should not spend six, we'll call it five, we'll call it $5,500 now, and then in two years spend another $5,500 to do another section.
I understand.
Yeah, one of the things, Randy, just so that you know, you know, obviously when I, when we were going through this process of rewriting the plan, I can tell you, in the back of Neil's mind, in my mind, was, at that time, remember that the state budget was different, okay? And the State of Vermont had a municipal planning, had planning funds available, and we've, we've been successful in tapping that. I mean, we got a, we had a dimensional study that we, we did a couple, few years ago, we broke that out, we're gonna obviously use that in this, in this effort as well, particularly for the, for the historic neighborhood district. And it was really hoped that the municipal development plan would be adopted, and then, you know, I'm gonna say on or around September, and that's when it was. And at that same time, we would go, because that's when the, the applications go in for the next round, and we were going to put in an application to update the subdivision regulations, which were written in 1976, update the zoning regulations, as Neil, Neil has described, and incorporate that into a single land use development regulation. So you don't reach for this regulation for a subdivision and reach for your zoning regulation for that. Many municipalities have combined that into a single document. That's what we wanted to do, and that's what we still want to do. The problem is, is that there isn't any planning funds available today. Now, we have learned that, you know, in the governor's budget, I think, that there is some kind of funding for restarting, if you will, the planning fund, because they just deferred it and it actually never, never resurfaced, actually. So the ultimate plan here, just so that you know, is to not abandon that idea, is that if, if the legislature does resurrect, if you will, the planning funds, we intend to go after those funds next September to do, in essence, what we wanted to do originally. However, you know, relative to the items that Neil has described here, you know, the planning commission really doesn't want to wait until, you know, December to start working on that. You know, they, they want to figure, they, basically, the planning commission sat down and figured out, what is the priority? And as outlined in here, this is their priority. So I think we still, I think the planning commission still wants to land ultimately where you're talking about, but does not want to, but would do it with the use of those funds. Doing the subdivision regulations, it isn't just a planner, you're talking about engineers, you know, road standards are all different, stormwater is all different, and so it's not just a planning exercise, it includes a technical and engineering side, which is really like a subcontract, which would end up being a subcontractor to a planning, so this is really just about planning.
Okay. Any other questions, Neil? I'll transfer the question to Mr. Bell.
Money, where's the money come from? Well, I have two, two ideas here. One idea, keep in mind that, you know, if the, if the City Council allows the planning commission to proceed with this, you know, this is a project that does cross fiscal years, all right? So some of the dollars would come out of the current fiscal year, some of the dollars would come out of, of the next fiscal year. You know, as you all know, I don't play with line items. If it's planning, it goes to the planning line item, it doesn't go to fuel, oil, you know, we don't, we don't play around with a, you know, with a line item. So the planning commission line item, there is a couple of sources of money. The, the planning commission and DRB stipends, for whatever reason, we've only, they've only used about $2,000. It's driven like yours, it's based on attendance, and of course, for a while, you know, the, the memberships was lower than what the budget was, so that actually accumulated a little money. So there's around $8, $800 sitting in that line item. There's also a $200 training line item for, for planning commission members. I think that the planning commission, they just agreed to not use those dollars. So there's about $1,200 right there that, that could be used for this purpose. The other thing that you could consider, and totally up to you, is, you know, relative to these regulations, it relates to protecting historic, these historic neighborhoods, getting some standards for those neighborhoods. It involves protecting the central business district. It, it involves protecting the central business district to, to make sure that there's standards for that district so that it maintains the architectural character of the area. I just throw this out, and I'm not one to make, make exceptions, certainly not all the time, but seldom. You know, I don't think that it's a stretch to consider using tower money for, for creating standards to protect the downtown. We don't hesitate to use tower money to be a matching grant towards sidewalk and handicap projects. Is it a stretch to use some tower money to create standards to maintain the, maintain the character? Those are the, those are the only two, you know, kind of pockets, if you will, that I see out there. And this is not a, this is not a table pounder for me. What I, what I think is important is the planning commission has some momentum here. You know, they've got that plan adopted, I mean, you, you folks adopted it. And it's, you know, the folks that attended a lot of the hearings, I mean, they really want to see these neighborhoods protected, central business district protected. And so they want to, you know, have some regulations in fact, in effect that do that. And, and without proceeding, you know, really, it, it puts the whole project on hold for, you know, 10 to 12 months, really.
So really, we're talking 50, $200. How much do we need to get from here to July 1? Are we talking half of that? I'm just, I'm looking to authorize a, a dollar figure. If it's 3,000 of the five, then let's move on, let's make a motion for the 3,000 to be approved with a follow-up of the additional money on, on a new budget, so.
I, without having done the actual math, I can't imagine it to be more than, than half of it. And I believe that I could manage it to such a way that it, it wasn't, right? So we could keep it to less than half of it.
Then I'd ask for a motion to authorize 3,000 of the, the funds out of the tower money, with the other money to be focused into the budget or folded into the budget for next year. Does that sound reasonable, that we can do that?
Sounds great. I will make said motion.
Good, and Randy second? Open for discussion.
I'm a little confused, though. I mean, I'm not on that, but this book that we got, the town plan that we went through and we discussed and we, so now you want to bring the, the zoning rules and the planning rules up to date to match the town plan?
Correct.
I mean, to, to coincide, to make the town plan function the way we want it to. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah. It won't be, just to be clear, it, it won't be comprehensive. It'll be focused on these three, Northern Gateway District, that's brand, a brand-new zoning district.
Okay.
The brand-new historic neighborhood district, and the proposed standards for downtown, the central business district.
Well, I, just from, will there be a lot of cha, is there a lot of changes on that? That, I mean, like, say, the central district, or is it just some things that we, you're going to have to change?
In the central business district, it's likely just some things, it's the development of those standards that has to do with sort of mass of buildings and that sort of thing.
Okay. All right, I just.
The historic neighborhood and the central business, and the Northern Gateway District are, are completely new districts.
Okay.
They need to be created from.
Yeah, the historic district, I, my, my reaction is, there's actually more work involved with the historic neighborhood district because I don't see the, necessarily the, the dimensional changes, that the dimensional requirements change for the central business district. The front yard setback is still going to be zero. The maximum lot coverage is still going to be 100%. I don't see that, those kinds of changes. It's about standards. The historic neighborhood district, you know, as I mentioned, burnt rock. I mean, we're going to get some mileage out of the burnt rock. You know, Land Works doesn't need to re-study our old neighborhoods. We already have that done, it's sitting on my desk. What we don't have done is to put in a regulation because, as you all know, you know, the medium-density residential district regulations is really about new development on bare, on vacant land. And it just doesn't work in places that, for instance, we just recently had to go through a three-month process for the house on the back of the park to, to have an attached garage, which nobody will ever see, all right? But because of lot coverage, side yard setback, you know, which most, every property in the, in the historic neighborhood district have those things already. But because the regulations are such that it's treated no different, a, a house in the media, in the historic district is treated no differently than Crosby Farms, it just doesn't work. So there is a fair amount of work to study, to come up with the regulations for the historic, for the historic neighborhood district.
So this is something like the, the property I have listed, Rizley's?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
That one's a corker, okay, I just.
That one's a real, real problem there, see? That actually has another problem, but that's, that's currently in the, that's currently in the, in the central business district, so.
I mean, that actually is one of the ones that would be affected.
Right.
Because it is currently in the central business district in the zoning regulations, but the municipal development plan visions it being in the historic neighborhood district.
Exactly.
That is a place where the, the plan is not in compliance with the regulations. That would be one of the things that we would rectify through this.
Because I don't dare to make a comment anymore, I just tell them, go see you.
They, and they do, they say, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thanks a lot, guys, I really obviously appreciate this important for that. And we're thrilled to put forward on it.
Okay.
Honored in planning.
Woo! Okay. Everybody saw the sample that was in your packet. Joan has given me the originals. We would like, and we're going to do them as a group. Let me just make sure. One is three squares, Black Sheep Bistro, Luigi's, and Park Squeeze. So I would ask for a motion to approve these.
I will make that motion.
Chris made the motion. Lowell made the second. Open for discussion.
Just to, just to make sure that it's clear, clear, Mike, this is not about outside seating on private property. These are all about outside seating where it involves a service of alcohol, in essence, within the city right-of-way. And that's the purpose of these agreements, so that, you know, obviously from a liability standpoint, it's very clear that these folks incorporated in here is a requirement for them to supply us with a certificate of insurance, so that there's, I never want to say no exposure to the city, but to at least manage the, any risk associated with that activity within the city right-of-way.
So these are the only ones?
Right, Joan, this is.
Yes, the others don't use them, like Hungry Bear doesn't use theirs anymore.
Oh, he doesn't? Okay, because those.
Daily Chocolate, that's not the right-of-way. Fat Hands gone.
Right, yeah, in the past, apparently, Joan and I have spent a little time in there. I think there, there was some confusion about Daily Chocolate. It actually isn't just about alcohol, it's about any kind of service out there, right?
Yeah, anyone that's sitting at the table.
I think it was thought that the area in front of Daily Chocolate, that's down at the lower level, it was thought that that was within the city right-of-way, and it's not.
Oh, it's not?
Not, no.
Oh, I thought it was too.
No, no.
I don't have a problem with any of them, but just relative to Black Sheep Bistro and Park Squeeze, I'd abstain from.
Sure, understood. Okay, any other discussion? Do we have a motion to pass these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Joan, there's no place for us to sign, you actually do the signature?
Oh, yes, I do. So the motion's fine, I'll take them back.
I was saying, I asked, it confused me, but that's, it doesn't take much. Virgin's Redemption Center proposed work in Main Street right-of-way. Anyone want to get out their map? Does anybody have any questions about the map? Because Mel's going to explain it all to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, first off, let you know that on March 8, there are two public hearings, both of which involve work within the, within the city right-of-way. And I, I should have taken the time to copy the ordinance. There is a city ordinance that states that nobody can, can work within the city right-of-way without approval of the city council. And it's possible that that's an ordinance that was written back in 1921, before there was a city manager. Because obviously, you know, there's times when, you know, I'm having the public works department work within the city right-of-way, or somebody's got to connect their sewer line to the sewer main. I mean, I, we don't bring those to the attention of the city council. The, these two here actually are different. And there certainly is work far beyond connecting a water sewer line to a, to an existing pipe. So I wanted to get these to you so that the, typically, when there is work within the city right-of-way and the, and the, and the development review board is taking action, let's say that the development review board supports the proposal, the development review board does not have the authority to dictate what goes on within the city right-of-way. What goes on within the city right-of-way is ultimately the responsibility of the city council. So in essence, on March 8, you know, if the city council, you know, wanted to take a position of support for what is proposed here, or take a position that they do not support what's going on here, that's really the time to do it. So I wanted to bring these to your attention in advance of those hearings. I thought about waiting until the development review board was done. I sometimes wonder about these things, a little bit of the chicken to the egg, do they, do you make somebody go through a development review board process, knowing that they need to come back to the city council? Or do you involve the city council simultaneously here and, and get the testimony? And I, I really think that it's beneficial to the development review board, beneficial to the property owner, to get comments from the city council right out of the gate. So that, because conceivably, the DRB could actually approve a plan, but they can't dictate the right-of-way. And so what happens is that a, a property owner can be in a catch-22. So I wanted to bring these to you, and however you all want to handle it, if you, if you want to take action or not take action.
I'm going to take and address one by one, so that way we'll have a clear understanding. On the property over on North Main Street, the Virgin's Redemption Center, has everybody had a chance to go over and look it over and understand what is being proposed?
Is that what those blocks are out there?
The, the, the blocks actually are temporary situation. The way that that, the way that the DRB wrote that permit was that they allowed them to open. However, they did require, with, with an obstruction there, so that there was not the type of vehicular circulation that was going on there before. Obviously, the DRB had a real problem with, with, it was okay when it was an office, when it was an office use there. You know, people came to work in the morning, if they didn't go home to lunch, their car sat there for nine hours, and then they, and then they went home. A retail establishment, you've got a lot more activity going on out there. And so the development review board, in their decision, in essence, closed off vehicular circulation in the front because of potential backing over, over sidewalks, backing out into, out into Route 22A. However, required Frank to come back with a front yard landscaping plan and implement that plan by the 1st of July. What, I often try to make sure that the development review board are not designers. I mean, they're, they're a regulatory body, you know, they're not civil engineers, well, Brent's a civil engineer, but, but they aren't, they aren't traffic engineers, whatever. So they saw a potential traffic hazard there, and so they made the decision with a lot of caution and didn't allow it. And what's happened is, is that Frank engaged Land Works to come in and design this plan for you. And so there was a public hearing called in their hope to be able to construct that. But obviously, that island, you can see where the property lines are, the construction of that island right there is within the, is within the city right-of-way. So the question really before the city council is whether or not the city council would permit Frank to construct that in accordance with these plans, or if there's any objections to that.
I, I know we write the checks, pay them and all that sort of thing, and tell them what we want, but have the public work seen any of this?
I'm not sure, Mike, if they have or not, but, you know, I can get it to them.
I, I would recommend, rather, however, or if we take action on it, I would like to at least show them what's potentially coming. So if they have some additional concerns, they would have the opportunity to address that. I should have asked that question before. Randy?
I, I know a little history on what's been going on with this, and I feel that we should take an action in support of this, because Frank had based his, all his projections on having parking out in front, and then all of a sudden blindsided a little bit by the action of the DRB has, you know, caused him great consternation. I do not see a problem with this, and as far as it's going to be a similar setup to what's in front of Variety right now, where it's directional, you know, they can come from either direction there, but if this will be directional and it's plowing across the top of an island, it'd be, should be about the same thing with no other problems.
Will, will that crosswalk that we got painted across there remain, or would that?
That crosswalk, Mike, to be honest with you, should have never have been painted. There, I can tell you that what's called a mid-block crosswalk really is not the right thing to be doing. They are really misleading to the general public. People do not expect to see mid-block crosswalks, and therefore they end up being dangerous. And yeah, you know, there is one on New Haven Road, connected to a sidewalk, but that, you can tell that's where the confusion comes, because the traveling public are certainly used to the presence of crosswalks at intersections. But the public is not used to crosswalks at mid-block. Now, there are certainly exceptions to the rule. In the, in the case of, of New Haven Road, I think that was put there because it was felt that everybody in Crosby Farms, when they're going to the pool or going to the elementary school, that's the path they're going to go. And so therefore, a crosswalk was painted there. Down on McDonough Drive and Job Corps, there's three crosswalks going across there, you know, so that there is, in essence, a hopeful, safe haven for, for people. But, but mid-block crosswalks really are not good, because drivers, it gives a false sense of security to the walker. They think that they're okay walking in a crosswalk, and then you have people in cars who only suspect crosswalks at intersections. And so it, it can be a little dangerous. So I don't think that that was a good idea. So I don't plan on repainting it, there's no need, there's no, you know, I can understand why it was put there, that it was Deniker serving Deniker, but that's off the table. The, the mid-block crosswalk on, on Moncton Road, I don't have any plans of repainting that one, that was put there because of the Boys and Girls Club. I understand it, but, you know, the real rule is, is you, unless you've got some real specific situation, you should really guard against that. So we don't plan on painting that.
So Frank's setup now, is, is he not happy with that, or is that just strictly a temporary setup?
That is clearly strictly a temporary situation.
Because I went in there on Saturday and I thought it, it wasn't bad. I mean, you flow through and you can park and head out around.
Similar to this here.
Well, not exactly, because I parked my car facing out toward the road, just because I cut in between the median and the building. And I thought that was reasonably safe, and not blocking any traffic, and then someone pulled up next to me and blocked traffic, but.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not in there for a long period of time. So that's why I was just wondering, if we're going through this whole thing and doesn't need to, or if, if the intent is to put a more, more elaborate system in.
I, I would say the latter, that's correct. Something, a permanent situation. Actually, to tell you the truth, the blocks, there actually have been some problems because of the height of them. They've actually had some incidents over there because they're, they're, you know, people can take their car and drive it up to a curb and have their bumper go over the curb.
This one it doesn't.
This one it doesn't. And some people, they forget, they, you know, you look in the rearview mirror and you, you li, and you don't, you don't see it. So those, you know, long-term, that's, that's really no good. But it, what was good about it was that it really gave an op, gave. gave an op, gave us an opportunity. I stuck my neck out a little bit, because, you know, it was what Frank did originally and what the DRB required him to do, even though they want, they required him to come back in July, you know, it really wasn't working very good. I, I think it was actually more dangerous than, than what was there before. And so, I had the crew go over and move, move the blocks around into what you see them today, which gives everybody an opportunity to get that to work. The key here really, or the real concern, was having lots of people backing out onto Route twenty-two A. And there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic, but there is some pedestrian traffic, and you really don't want a lot of people backing out over crosswalks, you know. It's like up here in the central business district, there's angle parking there, but nobody's backing out over, over crosswalks. So, you know, Frank engaged landworks. I mean, I'm, you know, this is on the agenda. I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, this is, this is Frank's proposal, so I'm, I'm, I'm under the assumption that this is his plan. I mean, it does accomplish what he wanted. It does make a lot more sense with the angle parking there. It isn't, if you notice here, it is an exit, it's an entrance and an exit. And the angle parking is to also send a message, along with a sign, that you enter, you enter from the south. So...
An exit to the north.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan.
Siggy?
Yes, sir.
So, where those blocks are, is where on this map? It says low shrubs and day lilies?
I'm gonna say yeah, you know, right in that area.
So, that's right there.
Yeah, it resembles that, yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
But I certainly don't have any problem, Mike, you know, if the board, you know, you know, were to, you know, if they were to take action, you know, subject to public works department review, I have absolutely no problem. That's fine.
I just, I hear from the workers down there that they just, sometimes it affects them, and they're plowing and whatnot, and they would just, it's a courtesy to them just to know what's, so if, they are, sometimes they're, they're experts on some of the things that we, we don't run the plow trucks, we don't know what targets, we don't know what damage is gonna be caused, if anything, if we rip a wing off because it hits that island or whatever. They, they have enough rough roads and manholes to worry about, not other things. So, I'm not saying that this is something bad, but I would definitely, I would definitely like to have them see these, however, we, whatever action we do take. And we do have a motion on the floor. If there's no other further discussion, I'll, I'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Joe Carey?
I'd ask for a similar motion for the South Water Street, the, let me get the name.
Lowell made it, Lowell made it, made it, seconded, yeah.
I don't recall a motion.
No, that was outside.
I just actually made part of a motion when I said.
Oops, I'm sorry. I say incorrected. I thought we had a motion.
Thank you, motion.
I just thought I missed it.
So, Lowell, you want to make that motion?
Dave just made the motion.
Oh, now I said, I said it for him to make his motion. Take the motion.
I made the motion. We accept the plans for the Virgin's Redemption Center, as drawn, with review from the Public Works Department first, with caveat.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Motion, how we have motion and a second. Now, I'll ask, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Carey?
I was trying to scan my minutes.
I was reading my minutes. You ruined it.
Trying to move things right along. We're gonna do that next Tuesday night, or Monday night, too. We're gonna move things right along. No. I'd ask for a motion, a similar motion on the South Water Street site, the Small City Properties LLC. Randy, Randy's making the motion. Do I have a second? I see a hand going up. Lowell makes a second. Open it for discussion.
I need somebody to explain this.
I should say, de-sugarate.
Sure.
Thank you for saying that.
First off, how's your?
Looks like it's backwards.
Yeah, I got mine right side up now. If you hold a paper so that you can normally read South Water Street, that actually will end up putting...
It's looking towards into the city.
Right. So, what's happening is here, as you're, the bridge is down here, and you're driving up the hill, and you turn right off of Route twenty-two A and on to South Water Street. Currently, the part on the north side of South Water Street, that parking currently exists in front of the brick store in a small city, in small city market. That's how that exists. There's actually three lanes of traffic, because there's actually a, a right turn lane from South Water Street to turn north onto Route twenty-two A. The DRB had, had Cory and his architects and engineer go out and completely measure up this intersection to investigate whether or not this intersection could accommodate the same three lanes of traffic and perpendicular parking in front of their proposed, what they, what they planned to do is to completely tear down the LeBeau and O'Brien building. And they may or may not use a portion of the foundation, but basically, the entire building would be turned down, torn down, and a new building would be, would be constructed. The building is actually planned to be a little closer to, to Route, to, to South Water Street than the current building. But, the way that is, that it is designed, it does, does not have enough parking on-site, and which typically happens in a central business district. And to meet the parking requirements and meet their needs for the business, they have proposed to reconstruct the sidewalk along South Water Street out in front of the LeBeau and O'Brien, and also install curbing, and to install these four parking spaces, one of which would be a handicap space.
What, what's the new building gonna, gonna be?
It's a convenience store. The gas pumps will remain. So, he's gonna move his business across to a new building.
So, the gas pumps are still gonna stay where they are?
Absolutely. Yeah.
And what's gonna happen over here? Is that gonna be connected to this over here?
No.
So, he has currently eight parking spaces, which three-quarters of the time are full.
Yeah.
And he only wants, he only, is allowed four on the other?
Well, he actually had, there is, I think, seven or eight spaces in his plan on the backside towards Riverside.
So, it's not on this? It's just the front we got, we're looking at?
Correct.
So, the, excuse me, so the back parking could be used, but then they're gonna be coming out right where you drive in for the gas?
Could, yeah. I mean, the curb cuts would remain the same. I mean, the curb cut from Route twenty-two A stays just as, stays just as it is today. The curb cut from the pumps on South Water Street is the same as it, you know, would be the same as it is today. You know, basically, you know, in front of LeBeau and O'Brien, currently, these parking spaces are drawn over there. I don't think any of it is painted. I think it's just hodgepodge. People park wherever they park. Obviously, these would be clearly delineated, you know, where you can park and where you can't park. You know, one of the things, because this, because they're gonna need a public buildings permit, you need to meet handicap, handicap parking requirements, which it currently doesn't have. So, one of the things that this would also require would be for the city council to make a change in its parking regulations as it relates to that handicap space right there, because it ends up becoming a public handicap spot. These are all public spaces. They're not, they're not his spaces, they're public spaces.
Okay. So, what's gonna be going on across the road where the store is now? Can somebody still put another store in over there?
Sure.
But we're not acting up on that.
No, I know. I just have concerns. People, they're running across traffic.
They certainly will. No diff, no different than up on Main Street when somebody parks headed south and go to the liquor store.
Didn't we have discussion about public parking on Canal Street at one time?
I wasn't here when you did.
Yeah, we did.
We did, and we didn't allow it, correct?
No, we allowed it.
Oh, we did allow it.
We did allow it. Eight parking places, with the stipulations they could not be restricted for tenants only.
For his.
They, they were, or, a, a, any, they were public parking places.
I wasn't manager at the time, so I don't want necessarily get in that discussion. But these are, these are public parking spaces. They are not his parking spaces. They, but they would, you know, the, the planet, the, the proposal is to create this, and the way that the DRB ends up handling these things is, is typically in the central business district, because buildings are sitting on their entire piece of property, they end up needing to get a parking waiver, all right? And many times, they, that parking waiver is tied, can be tied into other improvements, like it is here. So, they would, they, they might, you know, I don't want to write their, you know, speak about their decision, because their hearing is on, is on March eighth. But, the proposal, you know, is that, is that to accommodate this business, this parking would need to be, would need to be constructed. Randy?
I, I again, support this. I mean, this, I think, is, is really one of those, he's gonna go through the expense of moving the sidewalk and putting all curbing and everything in there. He's trying to go the extra mile to have, make this work and make it happen. Plus, he's gonna provide, he's gonna continue to provide jobs, and there might even be more jobs. So, I, I mean, I believe again, here, in the same situation as our previous decision, that we should push forward with this.
It's not that we don't want it, it's just that I, it's just mind-boggling right now looking at everything. You know, it's just, all these over here, traffic, it's just, I just think it's gonna be, people are gonna have to be very alert down there when they're pulling out, parking. You know, it's just, probably nothing's gonna change, but the point is, if something else goes in over there, you've got something over here. It's gonna be very interesting.
They run back and forth now.
There's two businesses there.
I know.
But when one side of the road's full, they go to the other.
When you've got the full store here, all these are gonna be going running. They'll go all the way swinging here.
Absolutely. There's no question about it. No, you know, very similar to, as I mentioned, up in the central business district. I mean, there's lots of people who, who park in front of the Stevens House to go to Hollyhocks, and they park in front of Hollyhocks to go to the Citizens Bank. So, you know, it's...
Right. I know. It's just that people coming up that hill and swinging in, and people coming in.
There is a little different. If you notice, there's, there's some dotted lines on the plan, which so, if you notice out here in this, I'll call it a bow bout. If you see these dotted lines here, and then they come back in and you show them, those are existing conditions. So, one of the things is, is that this bow bout gets greatly extended, in essence, so that when people are driving north, they, they actually will be turning onto South Water Street about ten feet further north than they used to. You know, they used to be able to like cut the corner, if you will, and it's not. And what it does is it actually brings some better organization to the traffic flow. So, when they pull on to South Water Street, instead of just cutting the corner and getting on, they make their way across, all right, and then would pull into, would, you know, pull into those spaces or go home, just continue on, onto South Water Street.
Chris?
I just was gonna ask, Mel, was, is this considered public parking in front of the current store?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I suspect that when, you know, we have similar problems on Main Street, you know, and, you know, hopefully, there'll be a business that'll move into small cities, and I'm, I'm sure there'll be a little battle in typical fashion about who's what, but they're, they're public parking spaces.
And that is, in a sense, a good thing. Having no cars parked there is a bad thing. That is a concern. We want our businesses to be overflowing with customers.
I bet that we park in there, too.
So, and, and, and now, you, I think Joe pointed out, that people do, sometimes if I go for coffee and this thing is full over here at Little City, I'll, I'll park over in front of these other residents on, on South Water Street. Before you, as you come off school, I'll park over there and walk over to the store.
One of the things that's made, that's, Cory has made very clear, this, this, this convenience store is, is, it's not like it's going to be a coffee shop to sit down. It's not like there's gonna be any, if you'll notice how the building is very, very close. One of the things that the DRB talked to them about was about, you know, picnic tables or some outside seating out there, and Cory has no interest in, in having that kind of activity there. It's, it's truly a convenience store. You pull in, you go to the store, you get your stuff, get in your car, and you go. It's not a hangout. That's not what it is.
I'm just, sorry, just curious. I don't know the owner of the small city market. Who is the owner?
Cory Foot and Hillary Foot.
And they were, they're Virgin's residents?
Cory, they live in, I believe Cornwall or Waybridge, John?
Waybridge.
Five-four-five number.
I'm not certain exactly which town.
Waybridge. He bought the, what is it, he bought the LeBeau and O'Brien property about...
No, I'm just curious, based on what's happening with their other locally owned convenience store.
Mel and I have had some discussion, and we just, we want to find out ourselves. Again, we will not interfere with what's happening there. We just want to know what the destiny is.
Yeah. Dave did return on that note. I mean, I did call Dave Simendinger. I'm, you know, really curious. I mean, they're, about what's going on. Dave called, you know, we've been playing telephone tag, and, you know, hopefully, Dave Simendinger will give me a call tomorrow, so.
It doesn't sound like the owner knows a whole lot about what's going on.
The...
Guy that rents, I mean.
Yeah, the, the current renter of the property, yeah.
All right.
No, we just, we don't want the place to be empty for any length of period. That would be some issues, still.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this.
We already have.
I'm sorry.
Randy and Lowell have a motion?
Now we have two motions. Before, I had no motion, no anything.
That's all right.
And is this with the same stipulation with the public works review?
Yes.
Yes.
Because that, this is, was actually kind of interesting with that down there.
Just, it's a little trickier for them to come around the corner with the wing. Not a problem. They're talented. Okay, we have a motion. Second, all those in favor of going forward with this, of not necessarily approving it, but showing our support. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Joe Carey?
Is that something else, Joan, that came in here?
Yeah, I got, I have got, the next thing that we have to take and vote on is, there is a request for use of the Opera House and having alcoholic beverages on March sixth, two thousand and ten, from the hours of seven PM till twelve AM. The Bar Inadole will be the one that has the current liquor license. It's a front fundraising, and is catered for the Virgin's Opera House themselves. I'd ask for a motion to approve. Randy made a motion. Lowell second. Open for discussion.
I have something. Now, what's going on with this? Until we get the sprinkler system in, are we limited to ninety-nine people, or is we can?
Actually, the law is the same, but for instance, at the, the Valentine's, Time's Dance that was here, they actually request a, they answer waiver or whatever, and have to have two people on so-called fire watch, which allows them to have more than a hundred people.
So, that's what they're gonna be doing from now on, until we have, that's what we're gonna require them to do?
Well, we don't require, they have, we don't require them. They have to do it.
Otherwise, they'd be in violation.
They would be a violation. They have to get their, I mean, they lease a space, and so they have to follow the public, public building. It's not, it's not...
It's not our responsibility to make sure they do follow up on this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it's not a responsibility. They're a tenant. Let's say that they put a hundred and fifty people in here without, without the things that they were supposed to do. The city's not gonna get a citation. We leased this property to them, and they, they need to operate this, you know, consistent with the law. So, I'm, it's not that I don't care, but I, I...
Well, why I ask that, is because when I went over this with Joe Menard, he says, "You own the building. Just remember that." And I just, well, what do you mean?
Right.
You own the building. You have control of this. Even though you rent it, you have control of it. You have control.
Yeah, yeah.
I said, "Okay." So, I assumed that, I had to make sure that they are following up. That's why I'm asking you.
Yeah.
If it, maybe because we're city or what, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I will tell you that certainly Jackson and I exchanged emails, and I involved Jim Brewer, because I wondered if there was some confusion about what fire watch meant. I thought that it meant you had to have two firemen, and apparently, that's not the case. But you do need to have people who know how to run a fire extinguisher, know how to call nine-one-one, you know. So, it's not like you have to have firefighters here. So, I had, Jim and I had that conversation. Jim was in touch with Joe Menard, and so, you know, I think at this point, Jackson is fully aware of what, what the Opera House is... at this point, Jackson is fully aware of what the Opera House's responsibilities are.
I just don't want to come back on that story.
Yeah, I'm with you.
I know. People are weird nowadays.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Of course, everybody knows the next meeting is the annual city meeting. It will be held at 7:30 Monday night with a dessert social starting at 6:45 to 7:15, readings starting promptly. There are 30 articles, and I'm going to ask everybody to share in the reading of those, so that I don't get hoarse and have to read them all. So what I'll probably do is start on the far end, Lowell. After I get done talking about it, I will then address you and have you start with, we'll split them up amongst the council members, okay? So you can kind of figure out who's got what, okay? Give you a chance to practice. Bring your book, so that, bring your time meeting book or notepad. So just, we'll share.
I'm going to find it.
I'm sure Mel has a few extra copies.
It's in your annual report.
Yeah.
The warning is in your annual report. Oh, no, Zig.
You know how I keep everything? Right now.
You have it.
I know, I've got it.
I rely on you, Zig. You know that.
Might take the next year to find it.
Okay. And of course, then we've scheduled the next meeting after that, March 16. Other than that, has anybody else got any points that they would like to bring up tonight? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Just one question.
Sure.
I've had two people ask me, and it has to do, well, after seeing this drawing, are somebody, are we even thinking about putting a red light down there? Have you heard anything about that?
I know that that intersection was studied back in 2004, 2006, and I can't say that I've ever read the study, but my guess is that you probably would not want that intersection to be signalized, only because, not that we need to make life easy for tractor-trailer trucks, but I'll tell you, you, every so often, it happens to us, well, you too, Zig, where if, for whatever reason, a tractor-trailer ends up having to stop on that hill.
Well, it was last week. It was there for a day and a half. In fact, they were repairing it that night at like 11:30 at night. They had this actual spread right out on the sidewalk, trying to get it, because it'd been sitting there all day. And they had a big truck there, and they had the, everything spread out on the sidewalk, trying to put everything back together, too, and it was like, right there on the hill.
Yeah.
And apparently, he slowed down, and then he couldn't get going again.
Missed a gear.
Missed a gear.
Right. Regained momentum.
It's not the first time.
There is, there is something else. This, by the way, the handicap is, if that is approved, that's going to require a change in the ordinance.
Right, exactly.
If we're changing an ordinance, we ought to look at some other parking spots. The one on the corner in front of the Inadote is almost caused, not one, several accidents. I almost got nailed myself pulling out there. And I just was edging out. People come up to there at a fair rate of speed, and if you park a full-size vehicle in there, they just can't see you. There's a pickup truck.
Well, it's actually the same type thing coming from School Street across the other way, too. If there's somebody parked right on that end, looking up toward Main Street, you can't see anything until you're already committed.
And I've been in that building for 24 years, and all the time I'm up there, I'm surprised I haven't gotten nailed or.
I mentioned this months ago about people bringing this information to our attention, and we ought to start, you know, looking at possibly changing. I know it's, we're, everything's prime, and we need as many parking places as we can get, but we need to go to safety first here. So, okay, I've asked for a motion to adjourn. Ziggy? Second? Chris? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried.